There.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a joint Flagstaff City Council and Flagstaff, the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce Work Session. Uh, today is Monday, October 5th, 2020. I'd like to go ahead and make sure that everyone knows that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice should we so choose to do so. Um, with that, um, Ms. Pastries, Ms. Pastrick, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate that. I'd just like to remind everyone that the mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. With that, um, City Clerk, can we please have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan.
I'm here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Whelan.
Present.
Julie Pastrick.
Present.
Mark Love.
Present.
Tyler Mark.
Present.
And Mark Harris.
Present.
Thank you so much. With that, Julie, if you don't mind, um, Ms. Pastrick, I'm going to go ahead and lead us through the I then would hand the next item over to you, which is item number five, and then we'll just go and alter on alternating, um, uh, duty for everyone who is on the teams, um, teams platform that's some questions. If you would type the queue into the comment chat box, that will let us know that you have a question, um, for the speaker, um, at that particular item. We normally wait until the speaker is done speaking before we ask questions. If you have a comment, it works the same way. You would type a comment into the chat box and your name will be called on in order. Just as a reminder, because this is a Flagstaff City Council Joint Work Session with the Chamber, anything, any comments that are put into the chat are part of the public record and available for public record request. Um, at this particular time, we are now down to item number four. Item number four is public participation for items that are not currently on our agenda. While council and, um, the chamber can listen and receive input, per law, we cannot respond to anything that we hear during public participation. City Clerk, is there anyone here for public participation?
Not this afternoon, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pastrick.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Evans, I was being a little silly earlier saying that if a call came in from her, I was not going to answer because we've had to, for all the right reasons, move our mayor, uh, our meeting back, but I'm so very happy to be here. And, uh, Mayor Evans, Vice Mayor Shimonie and City Council Members, I'm Julie Pastrick, President and CEO of the Greater Flagstaff Chamber. Uh, this coming year in 2021, we will celebrate 130 years of service to the community. Uh, we're hitting a biggie next year. Uh, tonight I want to start by saying that we are great for this open conversation between each other to bring credibility to and highlight, uh, uh, some of our well into COVID realities. I didn't really know what to say because we're not post-COVID, but we're, we're, we're hopefully flattening out that we know customers, employees, businesses and residents are facing. And I'm glad to have three board members with me today. Mark Love is the owner of Massage MB in Flagstaff and Prescott, and he is Chairman of the Board of Directors for the Greater Flagstaff Chamber. He has 34 staff at his Flagstaff location, which is he'll probably, uh, enumerate or, or, uh, illuminate, uh, down from 50. Uh, Tyler Mark is Principal of Westpac Construction in Flagstaff, a board member and a Business Advocacy Division member with about 120 employees. And Mark Harris is owner of Terry Marks and Chevrolet on West Route 66, which is an iconic business that's been in our community for many years, more than 100 years. So I just wanted to start with a couple of words, Mayor, before, uh, we move to, uh, a board member about some COVID activity, uh, over the past few months since it has been a while since we met. But right when COVID-19 hit, the Chamber immediately began, uh, one-on-one, almost 1,000 check-in calls to our local businesses just to answer their questions, to let them know we were here for them, to ask, uh, what resources do you need? Uh, if they knew about the financial assistance, which was on its way and/or coming pretty rapidly, how, how could we help them navigate that and help their businesses? So that really defined our actions day by day, month by month, uh, for a long time. We also then, right at the start, coalesced around our banking community, uh, immediately to discuss how they could support local business, um, what was in their individual toolkits. I realized community bankers all have different resources. Even though we knew federal relief was coming pretty soon, uh, how could we best serve perhaps masses or even one small business or five in a row? We didn't care. So the Chamber worked hand in hand with small local businesses to connect them with their bankers or with a banker, because we found that sometimes small businesses didn't really have a relationship with a banker and make sure what were the next steps so they could get, they could be successful with that financial aid application. And then in addition, the Flagstaff Chamber Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), partnered with Arizona Snow Bowl to provide grants to small businesses which didn't receive PPP. And, um, we focused on outdoor recreation and tourism and helped lift eight businesses, uh, for a total of $60,000. Each received a $7,500 grant, which was a really generous way for Snow Bowl and the Chamber to elevate businesses that were very much in need. Many of them felt that without that bump, they really weren't sure. And I'd just like to report that today's, I have a few stats. Some are super relevant to us and some are just broader, Mayor. Small businesses are taking every step they can to keep their doors open and their employees on staff. Their concerns, challenges, issues seem to be new every day. We, we get the phone call, well, this is new and why I didn't know about that? And so a little bit of their confidence is, is shaken about the future. And the facts are that more than $12 billion was delivered to AZ in PPP dollars since March and more than $9 billion in unemployment compensation was paid out during the first four months, April through July, when businesses were either shuttered or really heavily curtailed. Retail is trying to hold its own and construction sales tax revenue to the city has been a huge blessing. We thank Rick Tatter for his presentation to us to illuminate which areas were, were doing better than others and which areas we needed to focus on. We hope that the construction pipeline stays filled through this recession, uh, for continued planned growth. Then this is, um, a statistic that's rather interesting in a conference of national, uh, chambers, uh, across the nation, I mean, of small local chambers. Many businesses in their first quarter of 2020 experienced all-time high consumer confidence at more than 70%. They have started the fourth quarter with pretty big concerns, grave concerns, because it was 39% in the third quarter and now it's 50%. So it's climbing, consumer confidence is climbing, but it's almost better to say it's inching up rather than climbing. So that means 50% consumers are feeling pretty good about business and the other 50%, what's going on? What? I, I'm not sure. I'm struggling to find qualified workers. I am rebounding slower than others. I need more customers. So the pie is split right now. And then a statistic that I didn't like hearing, but we all know that many businesses will not be able to reopen. Uh, MetLife did a national survey and discussed minority businesses have been shattered. 40% of black-owned businesses, 32% of Latino, 26 of Asian and 25% of women-owned businesses have dissolved. They will not reopen. And to me, that's, it's horrible. Uh, recent data from our AAO, our Arizona Office of Economic Opportunity, shows that Coquenino County has been hit the hardest by unemployment of all Arizona counties. And we are, of course, hit the hardest in lodging and hospitality. We lost about 8,400 jobs in that category, according to them, 10,600 jobs for a total of 15.5%. So it is expected that we will have a very slow recovery in those areas. So focusing on the areas that are doing better might be, uh, a, a, a great strategy. We know that the local businesses really were propped up by federal relief during the shutdown, but that was only temporary. And, uh, we know that on top of the need for more customers and that consistent revenue stream, we're hearing from many businesses that that $2 additional wage increase coming January 1, making us a $15 minimum in Flagstaff isn't going to work for them. Businesses of all kinds have been calling, is this for real? Uh, gyms, childcare, restaurants, retailers, healthcare are either struggling at the entry level or struggling with those, those employees that are already making that and it's called compression, they also have to get a raise. So what do we do about that? Housing is already expensive as we know, but the $15 wage is not going to put more people in housing with the rising cost of food, gasoline and other services across the board. And the hard fact is that those increases that are a part of the business, um, profit or loss end up getting directly passed on to us, the customer. So in closing, I just want to say that very few places or companies we know will emerge unscathed from COVID, but we can plan ahead to diversify our economy, to balance our present tourism, manufacturing, retail sectors. Together, we've never had a task this big before. And all of us want Flagstaff to be known as a thriving community and we're really struggling now. We're showing up a little bit on the downside, so collaborating together on future policies and expenditures, capital expenditures that provide long-term economic output or, or taxes for the city's revenue and jobs for families, sounds like a good thing. And I, I just want everyone to know today that our Board of Directors values conversations like these that lead to collaboration with the city and the council to rebuild a healthy business climate very, very highly. And so we're, we're very, we're very grateful and, um, happy that I have three board members here that all have a different look at business and different experience day to day. So Mayor Evans, that's what I wanted to, um, talk with you about for an opening comment.
Well, I appreciate, um, those opening comments, um, Ms. Pastrick. And I appreciate the opportunity for the Flagstaff City Council to sit down with you all and have this conversation about businesses. You know, many of the, of the things that you have stated are things that I think that we, the City of Flagstaff and our Economic Vitality Department, um, could also echo. Uh, definitely, um, jobs are absolutely 100% critical here in our city. Um, and our small businesses drive, um, our economy. Um, what you said about ethnic businesses, um, we have definitely heard that. While many of the businesses here in Flagstaff did receive, um, the additional money from the federal government, the majority of the ethnic businesses here in this community did not receive, um, that assistance, um, mostly because they do not go through some of the larger banks, um, that had the opportunity, um, to disperse that money and chose to do so with some of their larger, um, their larger customers. Uh, we in the City of Flagstaff have been working very diligently with all our businesses, businesses of every different size, and we hear a lot of what you are saying. You know, with the minimum wage, I think it's important that people understand that that was a citizen's initiative. And while we might not agree with the citizen's initiative, the citizens did vote on it twice and it was, um, upheld on the second time. So we are trying to figure out and navigate the new norm that we are in. Uh, we also have workers who have not yet, um, either received their unemployment due to the backlog at the state, or, um, they were receiving additional dollars and they no longer receive those additional, um, pandemic dollars. However, they still cannot go back to work because things have changed in their workplace. As you can see that we are currently doing this meeting remotely. And so a lot of the jobs that were here prior to COVID, we can expect those jobs will not be coming back. As a member of the Coquenino County Workforce, um, Investment Board, I know that, um, Ms. Salas also sits on that board. We have been having numerous discussions about how to make sure we can retrain, um, our older workforce, our workforce that was doing different jobs that we see are now being phased out because of COVID. So, uh, we are appreciative of the fact that our construction industry, um, is definitely, um, carrying more than its weight at this particular time in our community. But we also know that our tourism sector has been heavily hit. Um, and tourism is our, our number one sector here in the City of Flagstaff, really in Northern Arizona. And so what can we do to make sure that that particular sector comes back, um, in a vibrant and robust way? Excited to see that the, the Flagstaff Veterans Home will be opening on schedule. That particular home, as you know, I was critical in the establishment of it here in Flagstaff, is going to provide 220 brand-new jobs, um, to our area, um, in the healthcare sector field, which are high-paying jobs. And so, um, with that, I will just go ahead and say, let's continue the conversation, but know that we are excited to be, um, having this conversation with our chamber, um, as you represent, um, over 1,100, um, small businesses, small, medium and large businesses, not only in Flagstaff, but in this, um, in the Northern Arizona region. Um, so with that, we'll go ahead and move to the next item. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Evans. Um, we have, uh, as we said, a, a nice, uh, diverse group of businesses that are with us today. So I thought it would be, um, it's probably smart of me to ask the Chairman of the Board to go first. So if Mark Love, our, um, owner in Flagstaff of Massage MB Flagstaff, Mark, would you like to introduce yourself and, and, uh, let us know a few of your thoughts?
Yes, uh, thank you, President Patrick. I appreciate that. Uh, my name is, uh, Mark Love and the Chairman of the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. Um, I also serve on the Massage MB National Franchise Advisory Board, uh, which comprises of six members who represent the 1,200 Massage MB franchises nationwide. So I would, uh, first off, like to thank Mayor Evans, uh, Vice Mayor Shimonie, uh, all the council members and city staff for this opportunity, uh, to talk with you. Please excuse my voice. My son had a game on Friday and we, we were vehemently cheering for him, so I, I'm still recovering. Um, can everybody hear me okay? I know my mic was a little broken up earlier. Yeah, okay. Well, first off, you know, we are all in unprecedented times and the business community, uh, in Flag is just under severe, uh, distress at the moment. Uh, in my organization, we're experiencing personally a 30% decline in our service hours and a 53% decline in retail sales year over year. Um, it's concerning as my business is somewhat unique in that not only do we sell and provide services to the general public, um, our guests or walk-in traffic, as we call it, but we also have thousands of members who are committed to our business through our membership on a monthly basis. Even though we have this consistency as a business, being our membership, we have still experienced a dramatic decline in business. So the distress on business is going to be further compounded by the upcoming $2 hop to the 15 per hour minimum wage coming into effect in January. And for us, the knock-on effect, uh, is very, very real within our business for all of our professionally trained staff, who were, I will add, already in excess of the minimum wage. But that recovery, that, that compression, uh, factor is going to hit us hard. Additionally, the recovery from being closed earlier in the year from COVID, the increased expenses in the business to mitigate COVID, um, and the slow post-COVID economic recovery that, that we're experiencing right now. Um, I will say that Flagstaff is not alone, uh, in specifically relating to COVID, uh, issues as I am seamless through the discussions, being, uh, being the representative for the 1,200 locations on the National Franchise Advisory Board, uh, and their concerns regarding the recovery. So we are seeing some of that nationwide and, and some of the same issues are coming out. Um, so members of the council, our, our community is struggling. Uh, with all the above factors, I would encourage the council to proceed with caution with regards to any increase in fees as, as our industries are really at risk. Um, laboring the residents and the businesses of Flagstaff would further depress any efforts of businesses and developers in Flagstaff to survive and really just get back on our feet. Um, as was mentioned earlier, uh, my staffing at, at the Massage MB in Flagstaff is down to 34 from 50 individuals, uh, a year, year over year. So a year ago, we, we had just, just under 50 individuals employed. That's 16 livelihoods that are no longer employed at this point. And we want to grow, uh, we want to prosper, we want to contribute to our community and to our city. I didn't want to take up much of everybody's time. I know there are other folks that are going to speak today, so I would like to hand the floor back, uh, to President Julie Pastrick and answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark Love. Um, I, I wonder, uh, the mayor and you and I had a talk quite a few months ago in March about, uh, the inability to recover employees. And I wonder if that 50 is, um, because your business has shrunk or if you are having an inability to find qualified workers? And, uh, where, where does that fit in since you are on a national board? How does Flagstaff fit in with Prescott or with your national colleagues? If that's a fair question.
That's actually a very, very, very good question. Um, so, uh, two part is, is, is available to find and two is, well, I mean, first off, is our business, um, big enough to, to have 50 at this point, uh, basically supply and demand? Um, I will tell you that we are absolutely full. Um, unfortunately for our guests, it's, it's taken a month, two months to get in, um, with the current staffing, so it is not as, as a result of, uh, not being able to find clientele because, as I referenced before, not only do we service the general public, but we also have a sector that, you know, but that become our members and they come in on a monthly basis. So we have that guaranteed, um, flow of, of income from, from our member base. So yes, we, we need to expand to service that. Um, you, you mentioned, are we able to find skilled expertise? Um, that is another part of the equation that we struggle with because our massage therapists are certified and licensed massage therapists. They go through a schooling to receive that training and that certification. And we work very closely with ASIS, the school up here, uh, to help promote that as a vocation. So yes, the, the other part of that equation is we do need more, uh, professional individuals to go through that certification. So we, I believe it's only eight to 10,000 to go to, uh, schools to become massage therapists. So it is, it is a very valid vocation and we would hire immediately anybody who is a licensed massage therapist or come through that school.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. It's good insight. Um, and Mayor, does anybody on the city council, would you like to ask if there's any questions for Mark? Since this is Zoom, I'm not used to, um, not seeing anybody's responses. Usually we kind of point at each other and, and, and just ask a question, so I leave that up to you.
I am watching the, uh, chat box. Um, okay, we have a question from Ms. Whelan.
Hi, Mark. Thank you so much for your report out. I really appreciate it. I remember at the beginning you said, I believe, that, uh, I interpreted as 30% of your hours you have cut back. Was that correct or was I not hearing correctly?
Yes, we've had a 30% decline in, uh, our number of services. So really that, that comes down to finding the appropriate, uh, personnel to, to come and service. What happened in COVID was, um, there, there were a lot of folks that could no longer reside or stay in Flagstaff. So, uh, we've had some folks move down to Phoenix, they move in with their, their parents. Uh, there seems to be a lot of that going on. Um, so yes, that, that attributed to, uh, some of that attributed to our decline, yes.
Okay, but it's not a matter of cutting hours, uh, because what I also heard you say is really business is full. So if you had the staff, you would be able to accommodate everyone.
That, that is true. Uh, even, even half the staff with our retail, um, our retail isn't really dependent on that. Uh, and, and like I said, our retail is down 53, but that is about a point with a 30% down. Um, yes, we, we would need more service providers, uh, uh, in the community to, to service those clients.
Okay, thanks so much.
You're very welcome.
Thank you, Jamie Whelan, Councilmember Jamie Whelan.
Hey, Council, is there any other questions? Um, I do not see anything else in the chat at this time, Ms. Pastrick.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Um, our next talk, uh, is a board member, Treasurer Mark Harris, who is the owner of Terry Marks and Chevrolet on West Route 66. And, uh, he has, um, as an auto, uh, dealer and owner, has insight as to a few other day-to-day operations. And, um, we, we're happy to have you here with us, Mark. Would you please say a few words to the council?
Absolutely. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak in front of the council. Um, kind of an odd way to do it, but hey, whatever works, that's, that's the important part. Um, I want to thank everybody on the council because I can only imagine a number of hours that must be put in by you folks, uh, and hassles that you go through. I, I don't know how you do it, uh, so for that, I applaud all of you. Um, last meeting, if you recall, Robbie had mentioned some headwinds. You got through a couple examples and I just want to reiterate a couple of those as well from my perspective. Um, first one being, um, again, I know you get sick of hearing about the $15 mandate. Um, the problem that I see here is twofold. Um, obviously we're raising prices to accommodate the extra dollars that we're having to spend for payroll, which basically normalizes the buying power that everybody has here in town. The problem is we don't play on a, a level playing field with the rest of the state. And it's very easy for people within Flagstaff to take that buying power and go elsewhere and make good use of it, which becomes a little bit of a concern for us and I would assume the city because any dollars that get taken out of the city are going to affect the revenues generated by taxes and such for the city. And so that's, that's a little bit of a, a, a concern. And, and the example I've used in the past is, you know, it's hard to go out for lunch, uh, in Flagstaff these days and not pay more than 10 bucks. Uh, you probably could go to Williams and pay $7. Um, that, that's a big difference. Now multiply that by the cost of a car. Um, and, you know, that gets to be real dollars. It gets to be real money. And that piggybacks then on any, uh, concern with any tax increases that might occur. Um, because as you know, we're one of the higher cities in the state already with our tax rate. And when you talk about the price of a car, $40,000 on up, you know, one percentage point is a huge amount of dollars at the end of the day, um, on a car deal. And so we're already kind of behind the eight ball tax-wise. Any consideration of increasing that sales tax is only going to make things worse. And it's just not that hard for people living in Northern Arizona to drive to Phoenix and look for cars. Um, many times they have to go to Phoenix anyways, right? I mean, they're going to be down there. Why not go look at the nearest dealer while they're down there? And before you know it, they've bought a vehicle. Um, and I know plenty of people up here have done that. Um, and really they're saving, you know, maybe a couple hundred dollars, but that couple hundred dollars is worthwhile. Um, it's just, it's a concern. That's, that's a big headwind. When you start talking about increasing fees to businesses, increasing the taxes, the increased minimum wage, I guess all I'm asking as a business owner and a partner in this community is I would really love to be able to play on a level playing field. And we're decidedly not level at all and any changes to that just making it worse. And so that's, I guess, my biggest concern as an automotive dealer here in town. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Mark Harris. Uh, I, I, I think it would be worth also commenting on the fact that, uh, it feels like the auto industry has helped prop up the smaller business retailers. But, um, the city does not break the retail out. Does, have you seen any, uh, studies or, or any stats to prove that the auto sales have, uh, through, through the pandemic has, have helped to keep economies, um, rolling along?
Julie, is that question aimed at me?
Yes, yes, if, because.
I've not seen anything. I know that from my personal experiences, everybody's gone through this. March and April were abysmal for us. Uh, we were fortunate that we were able to keep everybody employed through that. June bounced back a little bit, July, August, September, although not normal, it's not as bad as maybe it could be. And I think a lot of that has to do with the closing of the GMC store, obviously. Obviously, people that needing service are coming to us and that's helped us quite a bit.
Okay, that's good to know. That's really good to know. They're hard facts and we like to hear the stories directly from business owners and people that are working day in and day out. We know we are losing some businesses and we need to keep the gaps filled. We need to bring new businesses in, but it's always good to recognize those industries that are doing, you know, pretty good in the pandemic. I think part of it, we had talked about before too, is that many businesses were designated as essential prior to going in. And that, that helped to not flatten every inch of the economy down. I don't know if that was up to each individual governor, but in our state, that, that helped us a lot. So. Mayor Evans, are there any questions from the council for Mr. Harris?
We do have several questions. I have Mr. McCarthy followed by Mr. Odegaard at this time, then there's two other people in line. Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor, as always. Just before I ask my question now, I will say that the last car I bought is Subaru I did buy right here in Flagstaff, Arizona.
Thank you.
And the relationship I have with the dealer has been really good. They gave me free oil changes for a year or something. I don't remember the details. Anyway, my question is, if I remember correctly, council actually approved a decrease in tax levels for certain automobiles. I think there was a overall for any automobile bought here and then an even deeper tax cut or credit for cars that were hybrid or if I remember correctly. Has that helped you out?
Councilman, I'm unaware of that cut. We're paying, we're forcing or having our customers pay the exact same sales rate that any other business here in town pay for their vehicles. The only exception to that would be people that live on the reservation. They're not required to play, pay the federal state tax, but they do pay the city tax.
Well, I think that's something that needs to be looked into for two reasons. One is it would help you if you recognize that. And it would also help our residents and reduce the cost to them of buying a car. Mayor, am I correct on this or am I off base?
So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. McIntyre to discuss that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mayor. DDD Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilor and Chamber of Commerce. This is David McIntyre, Community Investment Director. Councilmember McCarthy, you were accurate. There was a program that council approved to address some of the playing field, if you will, for car sales and also to advance climate goals. The, the program was designed as an automotive rebate program so that if fuel efficient vehicles, hybrid vehicles or electric vehicles are purchased within the city limits or any authorized dealer within the city limits, the city can pay a portion or all of the sales tax. And that portion or all is dependent on whether it is a local resident and whether or not it is a fully efficient vehicle. So for instance, fuel efficient vehicles, and that was determined to be over 35 miles per gallon in the city. For a local resident, you can get a 0.7% rebate. For a hybrid, a 1.6% rebate. And for an electric vehicle, you get the full 2% rebate. So that is a program. I believe Jack Fitchett, our interim business attraction manager, has been in touch with all the dealerships. He must have spoken with one of your team. I apologize that information hasn't made it up to you. But, but we are excited that we've had a couple purchases that have come back through and received their rebate. And we're continuing to do outreach and look forward to making sure that more residents know about it. We're hoping this will help to move, move our climate goals forward and certainly to support our business community and our auto dealers.
So I guess my follow up comment is that we do take your concerns seriously. And we are trying to help and you know, every little bit does help. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. I'm going to go to Mr. Odegaard next and then the Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. Thank you, Mark, for your information concerning car sales. And, and thank you to Mr. McIntyre. He is correct. We as a city council did approve a rebate program for vehicles that are sold here at our dealerships here in Flagstaff to our residents here in Flagstaff. And they could get a rebate of up to $500. That's not some small amount of change. And so I think it's a very incentive program that hopefully we can see our residents taking of getting vehicles or in them into getting vehicles with fuel efficiency and get towards our cap goals for the city of Flagstaff. I did want to point out concerning taxes, property taxes. We as a city council have not for this year proved any property tax increase of any sorts. I know I got my tax bill last week. And if you add the two city line items together, actually we saw a decrease in city taxes. That was not the same on the county side or not the same on FUSD side. But as far as the city, we are really sensitive to any tax increases or any costs put on our residents in time of COVID. And so we're cognizant of that. We've addressed that. And, and I think we're doing a pretty good job of trying to keep costs low for our residents in time of COVID. And so, so again, thank you, Mark, very much for coming and speaking with us.
Well, Councilman, thank you for that. I would ask two questions on my behalf. Where would I find out more about this rebate program? Because maybe my staff knows about it, but I certainly don't. I'd love to do some research on that.
And I'm going to let David McIntyre make sure you have all the information, if not Ms. Hanson herself. Because it's, it's a huge benefit that can be used by our residents in our community that'll help our car dealerships. And I'm terrible to hear that you don't know about it because as I said, it could be up to $500 someone can get back as a rebate to put money right back in their pockets and help car sales here in our community.
So I see a lot of things being inputted into the chat, but I'm going to go back to Mr. McIntyre. So Mr. McIntyre can make sure that we can verbally say where you can find this. Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mayor and council member and all. So you'll see in the chat, as, as mentioned, that the link to the Choose Flagstaff website is there. All the incentives are right on the front page of that. But additionally, we'll reach back out and send you the flyers directly. I believe Jack Fitchett has also had it in the Flag Business News. And we're putting another ad in the Daily Sun, been pushing out through Facebook. But we'll come and make sure we speak to you directly and get you these flyers. It's really exciting to be able to offer this and we appreciate the council's support on that and want to make sure that it's getting used. So my apologies that you hadn't heard about it yet, but we'll make sure we get that information to you directly. And again, it's in the link in the chat.
This is Julie Pastrick. And if you could send that to me also, I will make sure that it gets out to all car dealers and the auto industry across the community. And really appreciate you bringing that up and Mayor for, and Councilman Odegaard for calling attention. We're grateful and we'll be able to send that out to all the member businesses as well.
Mr. Fitchett, did you have a follow up before I move on to council?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'm all right. I think Dave covered everything nicely. I just wanted to add in that there will be another Daily Sun ad surrounding just this incentive program either this Sunday or next Sunday. I'm not sure if we made it into this next Sunday's paper. And the link that I posted in the chat will take you directly to that Sustainable Automotive Tax Rebate Program. And we will send it out to the rest of the chamber group as soon as possible. Thanks.
Jack, thank you, Jack. That's awesome.
I'm going to go back up then to Mr. Odegaard. Did you have anything else?
Nope. Thank you. And I was wondering if Mark might, because he mentioned maybe two questions. And so I just want to follow up with that.
Yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that. But the second question got answered in the, in the conversation that we just had. So I'm good.
That's great. Thank you. And that's what's so important about having these communications between council bodies and our community business members. Thank you.
I do see that Mr. Love has a question. I'm going to go to Mr. Love and then I'll go back to the Vice Mayor and continue with council questions. Mr. Love?
Thank you, Mayor Evans. I just had a quick question, just looking at the flyer. When does this become effective? And what would the dates that it would be effective? Is it ongoing? Is it for a shorter period of time?
Mr. McIntyre?
The Sustainable Automotive Rebate Program is already effective. It went effective at council's approval right before they went on break. And it basically is ongoing while we have resources available.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to the Vice Mayor followed by Ms. Solis.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon again, everybody. Thank you all so much for being here. And as Councilmember Odegaard said, you know, this is why we meet. And this is why we talk and communicate and share information. It's to work together to best our community, right? And so I'm grateful that we're having this conversation. You know, I just, I'm excited about the momentum, Mark, about EV. And I'm hoping that we can do what we can to jump on that effort. And we're doing what we can at the local level to implement EV parking. I know that a lot of beauty hasn't necessarily made that shift yet, but I do see that being our future. So any help we can get from our community partners to further that initiative and getting people into EV cars when they do buy a new car is great. And let's have a few comments and maybe some of these might be questions. But I know that Heidi Hansen and her team will be presenting soon. And I'm sure they'll talk about what the Flagstaff Local Campaign, which is really going to create value to that customer and to our community about keeping that dollar local and being a local. And, and we had a great first year and we're building upon that moving forward. So we're trying to make that message known to all that, you know, when you spend your money locally, you're investing in your local community. We, we can, we benefit from that all in all. Mr. Harris, you also mentioned that folks are making more money with the minimum wage. And you know, a lot of people I talk to are struggling, right? They're struggling with rent. They're struggling with their groceries. They're struggling with their bills. And my guess is any money that's made that's in addition is just going to go to those basic needs. And, and my hope is that that will mostly be spent here in town. Although I'm sure some will be spent online and maybe even out of town. But I just wanted to make that comment. And, and I feel for the local businesses with the minimum wage increase. I know that's, that this timing isn't ideal for such an increase and it's definitely going to be a challenge. And I am curious to learn more about, you know, if any of the businesses have said that they're going to close down. And I'm just curious to learn more about, you know, how, how big of a hit is this going to be to our community? But as Mayor Evans and others mentioned, this isn't, this isn't initiative that was approved twice. And, and it's just kind of the plan moving forward and nothing we can do about it. Ms. Patrick, you talked about businesses wanting to ramp up. And, and also I think, Mark, you mentioned that too, Mr. Love. And, and that, you know, we've lost a lot of employees through our hotels and tourism. And to me, you know, the future is a big question mark, right? But what we do know, like you, like you mentioned, Mrs. Pastrick, is that safety is at the root of it a lot of times. And, and that's really a matter of health to me, right? It's a mix of health and safety. And you mentioned that we're leveling out, but really we're seeing a spike right now in our community that's higher than we've seen this entire time. And it's extremely concerning. And yes, it might be student and younger folks led, but that impacts all of us and we're still struggling to get folks to wear a mask. You go out any given day to any given business and it can be a hit or miss. And I know that there's a lot of work being done on that front. But anything that we can do in partnership to increase that health and safety and those mask mandate and protocols of social distancing, I think will help us all in the end. Because if we're trying to reach a thriving community, it starts with health and safety. And, and as Councilmember Odegaard mentioned in regards to housing, you know, we didn't put anything on this, on this election cycle as bond initiative. So folks did see a decrease in their property taxes. So we really appreciate everything that's being shared and we too are very concerned about the well being of all of our community. And appreciate you letting me speak and hearing me out. And I look forward to the rest of the conversation. And I just wanted to share some of my thoughts. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I've got a quick comment back if I might. You had mentioned this electric vehicle. I think this is extremely important conversation for us as a city and a community to have. And not just with me, but with all the manufacturers. Because without the partnership with the city and the infrastructure and, and all of that that needs to come into play, none of this. And I'm being asked to spend $400,000 in tools and equipment to support electric vehicles starting in 2022. Now, $400,000 on top of an extra $400,000 in wage increase this year. I don't know. That's tough. But if I know that I've got a partner in the city and they're willing to step up and do the things necessary to support the customers who buy the electric vehicles, you know, I'm far more interested in getting into that business. I, I see that is exactly where we're going. In fact, I know General Motors has dumped almost all their profits over the last 10 years back into creating electric vehicle platforms. You don't hear much about it, but all of a sudden in the next year or two, it's just going to come rushing down the pipeline. It's awesome. There's going to be some great stuff there.
Mr. Harris, I fully appreciate that comment and I appreciate where you're coming from. And I'll tell you that council has been working very hard to implement electrical vehicle charging stations at every outlet that we can find. Whether it's a new development or I'm at the city parking lot at the city hall, at our parking lot that you'll hear more about, our parking infrastructure at the airports. And, and it's part of our building codes as well, moving forward with any developments or any house that they must be EV ready. So, so we're doing, in my opinion, as much as we can do to get ahead of this and make it so that your customers can, can buy a car and feel like they can, they can, they can live with that here in Flagstaff. And I'll just close by saying, I know that there is a map that we've created that outlines all the different public charging stations. Maybe staff can put that in the comments section for this group. And we can share that resource as well because that's a very critical resource for any EV car owner, right? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to, I'm going to go to Ms. Hanson, then to Ms. Solis. Ms. Hanson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to let you know that discoverflagstaff.com website, as well as our city website, has that electric charging station map for you to go to. And then again, in the chat, chooseflagstaff.com. When you go to the homepage, you'll see to the right top, you'll see the incentive tab. And then you can actually click on that and it will show you all the incentives. But I just wanted to let you know that we are going to be presenting tonight. And Dave McIntyre will be able to share some of the other business incentives that we put together for our community. And I think it'd be helpful for Julie and her group to be able to send those out as well. So we'll make sure that everybody is armed and ready with everything that we have tonight. But I just wanted you to know that we don't want to make you try to find the information. We were actually going to give you the information tonight. So it is coming.
Thank you. Ms. Solis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hello, everybody. Thank you all for being here. Just a quick note on the Sustainable Automobile Rebate Program. I know you will have access to the electronic flyer and stuff. But also of important note that it's also income based for those individuals that earn less than 5,000 a year. There's an additional 250 incentive available when they buy a fuel efficient hybrid or electric vehicle. And also, speaking of, of electric vehicles, this incumbent council has approved the new building and fire codes last year that actually mandates new development in residential areas to be, to have EV plugs and new commercial developments to have EV charging stations. So you, that's why you're going to be, you're seeing in, in recent developments that this council approved. We, we actually require new developments to have EV charging stations. Also, I'm, I, I have been preparing for this, for this meeting and looking forward for a few months now. Because I look back on the takeaways that I took note of when we had a joint work session at the day as at the city hall many, many months ago last year. Uh, when uh we had a joint work session at the day I was at the city hall many, many months ago last year. Uh, the three takeaways were um, and that was, you know, when we had Guillermo and and um Guillermo Cortez of um SWI Engineering, but Robbie Finley of Finley Toyota. We had um, we had um, uh Ron Ghetto of um of Starlight Lanes and his uh um uh financial services. The three takeaways are one is streamline and fast track uh business pro- business-related processes, whether it's for meeting licensing and and um anything, any, any process that a a a business owner needs to be able to to um get in business or remodel or development. Number two takeaway is um a buildup on uh private-public partnerships and collaborations. Number three, some kind of, some kind of um tax incentives or uh rebates or reprieve for for um as as a, as a, as a way to to attract and retain uh current businesses. So I've kinda been those three, three goals that were um mentioned in our previous meeting have been in my, have been my top of mind. But now COVID happens, of course, it happened to all of us. And um, the N NAU Economic Policy Institute, you know, Dr. Guzman, um, conducted several ser- uh surveys and the current hurdles for businesses uh not only in Flagstaff, but in the entire region, you know, Coconine County is paying bills, you know? The keeping your cash flow, lack of income, lack of cost customers and tourists, things not fully open, consumer confidence, social distancing, uh planning with uncertainty, and of course, specific to Flagstaff is um the impending uh minimum wage increase come January 1st, 2021. So um, I invite, you know, um, all our chamber leaders here tonight. See if we could um kinda go back to those three goals that we have set forth last year. So moving forward with, you know, how how can we help our businesses in Flagstaff? Most of them are, more than 90% of the businesses in Flagstaff are small businesses. Is to stay open, keep them open, pivot and thrive and hopefully evolve and grow. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Solis. Um, I just want to follow up with two things uh before we move to our next business owner, just along these lines of thought. Um, first of all, I just wanna echo what the vice mayor has said, as well as Ms. Solis, about the work that council has been doing um to make sure that as we move into this new norm when it comes to um electric vehicles, that um our city is ready to go directly helping our local um automobile um car dealers here in town. Um, I also want to point out, though, that we're not doing this in isolation. It's not just the council. So so for example, we are currently installing, I believe it's a total of four of these charging stations that will be free to the public to use in our city hall parking lot, um, the west lot. That is actually done in partnership with APS. Um, and so I want to make sure that we understand that while the city is doing its job and doing its list lift, it's not without partners. Um, and then lastly, there was a a comment made about tax collection. And I want you all to know that we heard you. Um, you know, the need to be able to know, you know, what segment of our um of our small businesses or what segment of our business is going up, what segment is going down, you know, is downtown Flagstaff? What does it look like with um tax revenue compared to the east side of town? And so I asked for um Mr. Tatter um to really speak to that as our finance director. Because in the past, the city of Flagstaff was able to directly collect its taxes. And we had a system where we could tell you, you know, almost on a daily basis, what was going on in the different revenue streams, in the different sections of town, and we could actually um address issues really within 24 hours. What happened approximately two years ago is that the state of Arizona stripped that control from local cities and towns, and all of the sales tax revenue now goes down to the state. And because of how it's bundled down at the state, we have been unable to get the information that back that we need. Uh, we as a city um had many conversations during our budget retreat, this last budget retreat, because we're not even sure that we are actually being able to collect on all the sales tax that is due to our city because of how they are collecting the sales tax. Um, and so we actually um had to, and I'll let Mr. Tatter speak to this, but we were looking at having to reallocate dollars to make sure that we have people on staff that can then go and audit what the state is doing, because we don't get the information back from the state. Uh, Mr. Tatter, can you please speak to this?
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, and Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce, uh Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. Um, yes, when we were doing collections at the city level, we were able to manage all of our uh revenue streams. We worked with our customers, local customers, very well. And we were able to understand when people were paying and not paying. We we reached out locally to businesses. Uh, and things were working pretty well, but January 2007, the state began taking over collections. And we are receiving the data from them. Uh, it's kind of a higher-level data, which is what we report on our monthly sales tax reports. Uh, there is some data that goes a little bit deeper, which is called the NEX code. Um, which is the North American Industry Classification System, which could allow us to get to the lower detail. Um, but we have to do a lot of work to build that data and pull it out of the Arizona Department of Revenue system. Uh, so it's quite a task. Uh, we were also be able to report on locations within our sales tax system that we had, uh, looking at regions of Flagstaff to report. The state system does not allow us that level of detail. It'll be uh quite an effort to build a database to report on that type of thing. Um, but this last fiscal year, uh, the budget team did approve an additional revenue analyst slash auditor uh for the current fiscal year, which remains vacant due to the economic situations at this time. Uh, but we have opened communications with Arizona Department of Revenue to better understand our role versus the state role. Uh, it it it, something we learned last year is is we can still go out and talk to our local businesses and talk about revenue streams, talk about collections with them. When years ago, we said, you know, we were told that they're the auditors and they run the program. So things have opened up and changed, and we're kind of getting through the uh conversation with Arizona Department of Revenue. And uh, we're starting to build our uh database and our working collections a little bit better uh going forward. Um, so that's kind of where we stand with our sales tax collections.
And I also feel it's important to mention to not only um our local chamber, but to everyone who's listening, is that the state also charges us now for this service. I believe it's $280,000 a year that the state now charges us um to have our sales tax remitted to the state, and then for them to cut a check and and send us our share of those sales tax back to us. They charged us about approximately $280,000 a year. Um, and now, um, we are also having to hire staff to go out and do the auditing to make sure that sales tax is being paid the way it should be being paid, um, um, which some of us feel, which I feel on council, is something that should come for that $280,000 we currently pay the state to do that. So I just wanted to make sure that we mentioned that. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you, Mayor Evans. That's a very strong point, and that's a very big number at the same time. Uh, before I introduce Tyler Mark, I thought I'd just make a couple of comments. And one is regarding the property tax um being uh either the same or a little reduced. Uh, lessons from cities that are building economies that are very healthy uh climates for business, uh in the in the center point of those communities, almost always their competitive economic policy revolves around business property taxes that are affordable and that aren't higher than their competing uh states uh right next to them or in in their uh cities that they are peers with. So thank you for that. Some economies in cities perform poorly because their taxes and their regulations are too high, and we don't want to slide too far down in that direction. Um, Ms. Solis, thank you very much uh for your uh look back. I appreciate the the comments about the tax incentives and rebates and things to do together. I feel like we're on solid ground. We have built a foundation thanks to Mayor Evans and to all of you sitting on council and to the the staff, the fabulous staff at the city uh that we get to work with and that when we ask a question, we get an answer right away. Um, Mr. Tatter has been busy lately with business advocacy. He has presented regularly, as has uh Mr. Folk and his team uh regarding uh development and uh community development in their department. So that really says a lot about leadership, and we're really thankful for that. And then uh, that's a perfect segue into uh Mr. Mark, but I also just wanted to mention to Mr. Shimoney, Vice Mayor Shimoney, thank you for the mix of health and safety reminder that yes, absolutely. Masking up and the following the protocols that we've all learned are essential to stay open. Once you open is just absolutely essential. And we have a guide on our website, a mask-up guide that was put together here by my team, and it 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 describes how and when to wear a mask, and we're very proud of all the other COVID um protocols that are on the website, uh flagstaffchamber.com. Uh, and with that, uh Mayor Evans, our next guest from the business community is Tyler Mark, who is a principal with Westpac. He serves on our board, as I mentioned earlier in the introductions, and I think he can help us understand uh some of the nuances of his day-to-day uh business uh in construction and and um I I'm sure he can shed a little more li- light on how uh it's my hopes, hopefully we can be more successful working together in his arena. And so Tyler, I'm really appreciative that you took some time, and thanks to your wife and kids for letting you out tonight.
Absolutely, Julie. Thank you. Uh, and and Mayor and Council and and Vice Mayor, I appreciate you guys' time and setting aside, carving aside a little bit of time to listen to what what we have to say. And most of all, Julie and Joe for inviting me. Uh, my name is Tyler Mark. I'm a principal with Westpac Construction. We're a a large general contractor here in Flag. We've been in town since 2003. Um, in that time, we've performed somewhere around $350 million worth of construction projects. I think we have a little bit of a uh an insight on as to how how current situations are affecting us. Remarkably, uh, construction is a is a bright spot for the economy, and and what Mr. Tatter has shown is is the revenue from taxes in relation to construction are basically carrying the load um for the general fund and and kind of uh revenue for the city. Um, construction projects are being built. Uh, the pipeline is good. Um, and now is the time really to inject some more energy into our community. And the reason I say that is a lot of these projects that are being built and and the taxes are being collected on right now and permits are being paid for uh had been had been forecasted and been in the pipeline for quite some time. Ultimately, you know, jobs take a long time to get to market. And our economy or in our market sector is extremely volatile right now. Uh, commodities are up and down. You throw a hurricane into it, you throw a COVID into it, and we're seeing market spikes on certain materials that are that are unheard of. Lumber, for instance, is up over 200% in a three-month period. Uh, I'm not concerned, right? So speed to market is key for for what we do. The faster I can get through the development cycle and get a project built, the faster uh the tax revenues start coming to town, the permits are paid and 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 so on and so forth. You know, ultimately, uh contractors like myself want to build good product for town and align with what the city has to do uh to make that. So you know, if if we're able to speed things up and and get things done quickly, it's ultimately gonna make less work for city staff. It's gonna save dollars for the developer and and brings the project forward in a more timely manner. You know, an interesting comment um about costs. You know, we're seeing a uh a pro- a proposition right now in in city council that's talking about adding some dollars to the police and fire funds, which I completely understand. Don't get me wrong, I I think police and fire should be fully funded. But if we're if we're talking about the most vibrant uh market sector of the city of Flagstaff and adding additional costs to that, um, I'm a little bit concerned with that. And 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 the reason being is historically, I understood the general fund to to pay for certain items like that. So I'm wondering if there's a way to work through that, you know, adding that cost to what we do could ultimately sink projects that are on a very fine margin to begin with, within their pro forma. Um, it it also could stifles uh a project that that's in its infancy because of of a fear of taxation. You know, I I work with a lot of regional, uh, national developers, uh statewide developers, and and unfortunately, the city of Flagstaff has a um, a bit of a um a black cloud around it sometimes i- in in regards to embracing our community. And and I thought it was a a great segue. Ms. Solis made some comments about what we talked about last year, and how do we partner? How do we, how do we create a partnership between my community and city staff? I was speaking with Dan Folk or earlier today, and we had a good conversation, probably half an hour, 45 minutes. And what can we do to streamline, to help the city streamline the process? Um, I I think I need to be able to provide feedback to you to be able to en- enact certain tweaks to how we get to the finish line. Um, you know, the IDS process and in dealing with uh the working through plans and getting them uh approved in various stages of the pre-development and development. Uh, there's really no public interaction, and I think that opening up um the conversation to the developer or my myself as the contractor or the architects and engineers could potentially uh eliminate some of the back and forth that we get. When we send in a set of plans, we get back comments, and then we send back revisions, and we get back more comments, we could probably cut cut some of that out by just sitting around a table and talking. And and it was actually something that Dan and his team are working on in in engaging us to to understanding how can we, how can we work as a team? Uh, the timeline for completeness reviews, which is an early step in the process. Uh, there there's a lot of windows of time that are allocated to certain milestones that I think uh some simple box checking and and checklist could be be made by uh staff that might eliminate a a a set of plans or a or a concept review from sitting on a planner's desk for a couple of weeks, because they're so busy, right? You know, what could we do to cut that time out? Um, overall, the the time for a concept plan approval and the cost required to get a concept plan approved is a big stymie. Uh, I've been hearing it. I I'm working with a client who's out of Ohio who knows that he's never seen the amount of money he's gotta spend to even get a concept plan approved. Now, if you guys don't know what a concept plan is, just that, it's a concept. So it's a, it's a a project in its infancy. Can we build this on this piece of land? And and developers have to spend a a significant amount of time and money in order to get that approval, which some developers don't have the time nor the money to do. They'd rather just know, hey, can I build here? And if so, let's take the next step as a team and work through all the ordinances and and various codes that we have to adhere to during the building uh permit process. Um, the overall time for plan review, there's a lot of back and forth, like I said earlier. I think a a little bit of a partnering or a or a some sort of team to where we could help uh just streamline the comments and the back and forth, I think ultimately will bring projects forward sooner, which will will drive costs down over the long run and and also help uh boost revenue through tax and and other sources to the city. So, you know, overall, for us and 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 in direct response to Ms. Solis's comments, it's beat the market. It's beating, it's it's timing, and it's teeming. And and we really feel like there's an opportunity right now sitting in front of us. Being the shining star, the construction is, uh, it's to to kind of reopen up the floodgates and and help some of these projects that are that are kind of working their way through the process coming forward a a little bit quicker. So you know, that's what I have to offer. I, you know, I open it up to any comment, comments or questions that anybody else out out there has.
Thank you very much, Tyler. We appreciate that. And and um we, you're the one who is uh working this uh day in and day out, and and you're the one who understands what is uh moving us forward and or uh, you know, helping us stay competitive. And we're super sensitive at the chamber to se- to um competitiveness and our ability to move projects to market, um, the cost to do business. We definitely are losing We definitely are losing some aspects of business to other cities because of the time it takes to come to market. I don't want to get into who or when right now, but that's a fact that has been relayed to me and discussed with me more than once. And I think our cost of living and the jobs that we care about retaining and creating rely a lot on the construction industry and on projects that are compatible to what our regional plan and city council values are. So, we really appreciate that you are able to really focus on those few points that you understand are not allowing us to move as fast as we can. I know there's reasons for it, but I get back to some of the comments made already. And the open communication really helps. And so for that, we're grateful to everyone on council and mayor for listening and for offering questions and/or helping us move to some joint solutions. And a big thanks to, as I mentioned before, Dan Folk and Tiffany for coming over to the Business Advocacy Division of the Greater Flagstaff Chamber. It's a very large division with about 30 volunteers sitting in on what's going on in the community. And just recently, in a meeting the last month ago or so ago with Vice Mayor Shimoni and City Manager Greg Clifton, we were able to discuss how the construction industry has been such an anchor during the recession for us. So, I offer those comments before we take the questions. And Mayor, thank you. If there are questions from city council, would you please ask those?
I will. I don't see questions just yet. But I did want to give Mr. Folk the opportunity just to mention some of the things that they have been doing. You know, we have heard a lot of his name right now, tonight, you know, with accolades. And I do think it would be great if he could just mention what his staff has been doing under council direction.
I agree totally. Very good. Very good. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor. This is Dan Folk. And thanks for giving me a few minutes tonight just to update you on some things. Like Tyler mentioned, we did have a nice talk earlier today. And, you know, we're always within community development. We're always trying to assess, how can we manage the workload? How can we best serve our community? How can we best implement everything we've been asked to do and implement the goals and things that are, you know, reflected in our codes and requirements? I will say, I think when we spoke last year, I told everyone that I'd be doing this listening tour. And I have been doing that. It did get interrupted, you know, in March by COVID. But, you know, I was probably once or twice a month, I was meeting with a variety of people within our community, builders, architects, business owners, citizens who don't necessarily do business with CD, just to hear about, you know, their experience with community development and our requirements. And there is a theme, and some of it was brought up tonight by Tyler. I think some of the challenges for us as a staff is that we're asked to do a lot with our codes. We really are. It's not just planning and engineering. You've got stormwater, streets, utilities, fire, the building department, sustainability. You know, we're implementing through our concept site plan process, then building permits, all the way through inspections. You're going to work with somebody in each of those things I just listed because there's a component of that in all of our permits. You know, we're trying to accomplish a lot with our codes. And we have a process based on experience because when something gets finalized and maybe it didn't meet the requirement, you know, we're accountable, community development's accountable, that the things that are being adopted are being implemented. So, that being said, there's always ways to, I think, deliver our services more efficiently. I think one of the ways we as a team need to manage the workload is being more efficient, frankly. But the rest is when, you know, something gets missed. And then, again, staff is accountable. And maybe it wasn't really staff, maybe the owner didn't deliver what they were supposed to. But we're accountable. And then that leads to a new process because something slipped through the cracks. And so, again, you know, we have this process for a reason. Most of it's out of experience and responsibilities to deliver. But again, I'm very open to the discussions. The next step for my listening tour, frankly, was to put a panel together and just, you know, start with simple questions. What are five things we could change to make your experience better, more affordable, you know, a little more seamless? But again, it's, what we're doing is very complicated. And I'm very proud of our staff. And, you know, as you consider amendments to our codes, this is happening in real time. I think council can ask yourself, as the folks who adopt these rules that we put into place, you know, are we making the code simpler with this change? Are we making it easier to use? That's one of the challenges we've had. But every time an issue comes up, it seems like we try to come up with a way to regulate it and fix it through the code. And every time we do that, staff has to review it and inspect it and ensure that it's happening. We can ask ourselves, are there other ways to address this issue other than mandating it somehow through a code provision? And so, really, my next step is, again, to bring this panel together of folks I've heard and see where we can make improvements on our process. I will say that I think the development community in Flagstaff is committed to this. I think city staff is committed to this in terms of delivering good quality projects for our community. But it might involve some really hard discussions in terms of requirements that we may feel shouldn't be in place anymore. Or maybe we put more of the responsibility on the applicant and not so much on the city as the one who has to ensure that all of these things are happening. I had a builder I used to work with years ago who would say, you know, you can write all the rules you want and I can meet every rule you're asking for. It can still be an ugly project. Because at the end of the day, it's up to really the owner and the builder to make it a good project. And so, you can probably hear my dogs barking. That's my sign to wrap up my comments. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Folk. I wanted to go back to something that Mr. Mark said because I do think it's important to acknowledge that. You had mentioned, I believe you had mentioned taxes, but I think what you were talking about was the impact fee discussion that council had recently. I just want to make sure that I was correct on that.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And the reason why I want to bring that back up is because council had a robust conversation about impact fees and what they should be and what they shouldn't be. We also had a conversation about when was the last time we had looked at impact fees? And when was the last time we had really addressed the issue? You know, council does not take every impact fee that they can by law. We really focus on police and fire. And one of the things that we had a discussion about is who pays for that growth? Who pays for the additional fire truck that is needed when a new subdivision goes in? Is it the people that currently live here? Or is it the new people that will be purchasing that particular, those particular houses that require the new fire truck? We also had a conversation about the need for impact fees or the need for the extraction process. When we talk to larger corporations or, excuse me, larger developers, the developers have been pretty clear that they like to see just a flat impact fee so they can work that into their pro forma so that they can move forward. The issue is, is that the state of Arizona does not allow us to do one thing for large developers, say that are building 1,000 homes. And then for the smaller builders that are really building two to four to maybe 10 units a year. The way the state of Arizona is set up, it has to be the same for everyone. And so, the extraction process doesn't work for the small builders. And so, I just wanted you to have that background. I'm not sure if you had the opportunity to listen to the full discussion that council had about it. But I do think that there'll be more discussions about, you know, which is better for our community as we move forward. And I'd like to ask you, as a large developer, as Westpac, what do you think about that?
Well, thank you, Mayor Evans. So, I did listen to that discussion and I left thinking a couple of things. One, many times in other cities, the cost of new trucks and whatnot have come from the general fund. That was my comment earlier. We've got a robust collection process going currently with construction. And so, what I'm saying is, is I feel like further tacking on costs, whether it be an impact fee or a rate into the permit process, is just going to compound the fact that our cost of construction here. So, we operate, Westpac operates, our main office is in Phoenix. I do projects in both Phoenix Flagstaff and out of state. And our cost of construction in the city is historically 15% more than what we see for the same type of product down in the valley. Compound that fact with the size of our town and the amount of workers that we have in this town. And we've got a very expensive cost to build product here in town. So, all I'm saying is that the developers that I work with and the performers that I'm seeing, when they see my cost of construction and then they go, okay, well, I look at it in Ohio or wherever, man, you guys are expensive. It's like, yeah, I am expensive. We've also got all these fees that you should be aware of. I do a lot of multifamily. You should be aware of all these fees that are part of stormwater or any of these permit fees. To further tack on another 15 cents or whatever it's going to be, I think is taking that pro forma and making it almost impossible to build. That's what I'm seeing.
And so, your suggestion is that rather than have impact fees, we should fund the new things that we need with the growth that is coming out of the general fund?
Either through a bond initiative or out of the general fund. What I saw from Mr. Tatter was the general fund had a surplus compared to where they expected to be, given the COVID crisis. And, you know, if we've got that opportunity, yes, I know we don't want further cost fee of a bond, but our bonding capacity is pretty high right now as a city. I see this as a citywide cost, whether or not you're building new or you've been living here for 20 years. Yeah, I've personally been here for 12, 13 years. You know, where do you want it to go? It's going to come from somewhere and I appreciate why construction is the easy target. Unfortunately, I saw the charts on where they think the value is and what they're targeting, that we're historically lower than other cities for these same fees. But I don't tend to agree with the approach, given how expensive it is to build here.
So, Ms. Pastrick has a comment and then I'll go to the Vice Mayor, who also has one.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Evans. Tyler, if you wouldn't mind, in my national conference, the Future of Chambers, just about a few days ago last week, we talked about the supply chain disruption that is a national problem now for construction and that the cost of materials as a result are going up. Can you explain to us what's going on? Because I think that speaks to Mr. Folk's comments about, you know, he's trying to make things more affordable and are we seamless? I hadn't heard that before, that it's really causing cost of materials to go up. Could you please speak to that?
Yeah, I'll start with lumber. You know, when COVID hit, quite a few mills shut down and nationally, this affects all the way across the nation. We've got a 20% tariff on Canadian soft goods where the majority of our lumber used to come from. Compound it with the fact that about half the mills cut production because they were anticipating a nationwide slowdown in home building. And then you add into it, when everybody was at home because of COVID, everybody's doing home improvement projects. So, housing didn't slow down. People were doing home improvement projects. And then the mills shut down. They were at half capacity. They used to run three shifts. Now they run two shifts. So, we've got a constriction on the ability to produce lumber. And lumber and homes are the number one driver of my industry nationwide. So, things are starting to ramp back up, but they're so far behind the demand. There's some stats that I saw this morning from the National Association of Home Builders that since the end of April to now, the cost of a home has gone up $16,000. Okay, that's just related to the cost of lumber, right? That's a major issue. And then you throw in two other factors like PVC and drywall have gone through the roof because of the hurricanes. So, we're getting this snowball effect of material costs that are going through the roof. And our pipeline is getting backed up. It's a difficult situation right now.
I think that's important for us to know and for us to be aware of. It's, there are so many layers of unintended consequences to the virus and to the hurricane. So, thank you, Mayor. I'm glad for that explanation. I wanted to understand that better.
We're going to go to the Vice Mayor, followed by Ms. Whelan. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Mark, for your insight and sharing your experience with us. You know, it's interesting hearing you talk about this. And, you know, obviously, supply chains are struggling and competition is driving the market up on certain items like crazy. And that's just something we've witnessed with COVID. But at the city, I do feel like that will pass and the channels of distribution will meet the need. And we're just experiencing some turbulence because it's still the first, you know, now we're getting into the second wave of COVID. But I hear what you're saying, but I just wanted to comment on your thoughts and kind of bring this, you know, ask the board, the chamber board, what your thoughts were. Because, you know, what you were saying in regards to new development being paid for, you were saying a combination of general fund and potentially bonding, which then increases the fees of our homeowners to pay for new developments. While meanwhile, Mr. Mark, we're seeing development skyrocket in our community. We are seeing no slowdown of projects. And like you said, it's been really holding us and carrying us through this time in a positive way. But, you know, from my perspective, I'll just share that, you know, I really think that new development needs to pay for itself. And we shouldn't be putting this back on the homeowners who are struggling today. And in doing that, I think that development's going to continue. We're not necessarily threatening that development might slow down. Maybe what we're threatening is the cost of that buy-in price. You know, maybe that initial price for homeowners is going to go up because of this. But I guess it's, you know, a values question of who should pay for growth? Should it be the new owners of housing and the new developments? Or should it be our community at large and the homeowners in Flagstaff? And so, that's just what's going through my head. Thank you.
I'd like to reply to that, Vice Mayor. My only response to that would be the development that you're seeing right now is a pipeline that existed and started in its infancy two years ago, right? And so, my burn off, our company burn off goes a year or two years in advance. And what we saw in the middle of the summer, right when COVID hit, there was a huge pause. And locally here in Flagstaff, commercial development is dead. You talk to any architect in this town, there is no new commercial development being drawn. We're historically six to 12 months behind an architect's pencil and their pen. And so, my point is, is when they start drawing, you've already had a developer that started looking at numbers. And those numbers are tied to these costs that I'm talking about. And if you compound a cost, an upfront cost from a city and the timeframe to get through the city and then the cost of materials and the cost of labor and the cost, cost, cost. I understand. I mean, I'm a taxpayer too, Mr. Folk. I don't want my taxes to go up. But I think it's a shared responsibility to backfill COVID sites in the past as a community. I really feel like it shouldn't be the new guy to the table that pays for everybody's benefit. I think that should be spread amongst the people that have been here and who have benefited from that nice fire truck that's now old. Why would the new guy to the table pay for the new fire truck? It doesn't make sense. It should be spread amongst the people who have been using it. And now we need to replace that cost. That's my point. If we stymie development or straddle them with so many costs, there won't be new development. Or if it is, it's going to be very expensive for the homeowner or for the businessman or for whoever to pull it off. And that in turn ultimately raises the overall cost of living in this town, which is already high. We all know that.
Thank you.
I guess I just wanted to jump in and just say that I think there's confusion as to what the impact fees pay for. And I want to ask staff after we have a conversation or after we have Ms. Whelan, because it's not that we're paying for a fire truck that we all would use in our community. What it is, is that there are new neighborhoods or a new group of individuals that trigger the need for a new piece of equipment to make sure that those individuals can have the same level of safety as everyone else currently has. And so, I think it's really important to mention that it's not the residents that are currently here not buying their own piece of equipment. That kind of stuff is already within our budget. It's what's triggered with the new individuals that have come in. And so, I do see that Ms. Antal is prepared to answer that. I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan first, Ms. Antal, and then I'll come back to you. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Great conversation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Um, great conversations, difficult conversations. But I'm so glad that we're willing to have them together. You know, everything that you uh brought up, Mr. Mark, is is something day one. We were told, concerned about, and tried to push to change some of the things. And and I'll tell you, it has been one of the most difficult uh areas since being on council is is to move in a a more expedited way, very, very. So I understand what you're saying. You're not the only person that we've heard this from. Uh, and and I've been on a council for four years. So I'm I'm sorry that uh we're still in the phase of gathering information. Uh, it's it's been very frustrating. Um, you spoke about your material costs and and I just want, as a small business owner, that is across the board. It's not only in, I'm sure you understand this, but it it's food items. It's in retail. So it's across the board that we're all being faced with our material costs or a food cost going up two and three hundred percent. And 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 so you're right, big circle comes around. Who pays for it? We pay for it. So uh we're, my point being, we are in this together. Uh, it concerns me to hear what you just said about no commercial development. And what strikes me about that is that if we don't have commercial development, what does that mean for our town? Is this a retirement community? Is this a place to come and 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 just uh have a second home and and not bring your business here? Uh, I think it's gonna be a priority for our city uh to to uh develop in that way. If not, we're losing the city. And we can already see actions of of privilege, of uh just unwillingness to to really take an honest look as to what is happening in our city and who is driving that. Um, and so I don't know. It's frustrating, but I need to just speak very honestly. I hear you. Uh, it's not um something that that many of us have not tried to to change. But on the other hand, right, double edged sword. I have gotten information where we have individuals who have jacked up prices of homes a hundred thousand dollars. Why? Because they could. So, you know, if as we go forward in hopefully this discussion, but then see some action in, you know, we've got to see action or we're gonna be, you know, just like in our affordable housing crisis. Talking about it, talking about it and not doing. So members of the Chamber Board, um Julie, I just really appreciate your willingness to come together and speak openly and honestly. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I do have a question, though, or maybe it's just an observation, right? And, you know, because we are talking about no commercial development currently in the pipeline. Or there's development that is thought about, but perhaps has not gone to the development or the review or the concept stage. So, you know, by uh Councilmember Whelan, you brought forward a fair item last week. I believe it was you. That had to do with the vacant commercial property that we currently have and wanting to turn that into affordable housing. So when I hear that there's no construction, that there's no commercial construction currently in the pipeline, I then think back to your item last week that directly looked at the issue of the brand new commercial retail spots that we have available that have been empty now for two, three, almost four years. And then also the fact that's not counting the dilapidated, and I use that word very directly, the dilapidated commercial property that we have here in the city that stays vacant for decades. So I I wonder if perhaps some of the reason why we don't have new construction for commercial currently in the pipeline is because we currently have new and old commercial that is not being fully utilized. Um, I mean, we look at some of the spaces, the Hub, the Standard, Fremont, um, you know, Aspen. Some of these places have commercial, brand new, that's not even built out. And we get, we get complaints almost on a weekly basis about the fact that we have commercial that still has stuff dangling, concrete floor and all the rest of that. So I just throw that, I guess, back out to the chamber as well as to Mr. Mark to say, you know, I understand what you're saying, that there's new, no new commercial construction planned. But we as a city are trying to figure out how to convert the the commercial that we have that's not being utilized into affordable housing. And those seem to be two different things going on there. So I don't know who wants to respond to that.
Mayor, may I, may I speak to that just for a second?
Mm-hmm.
Um, so when I hear that, that's true. That's commercial development. Um, I think of that as retail. Things that I'm thinking about are larger. How do we attract jobs? How do we attract larger businesses? And and we're gonna see how, one way we're trying to do that is out at the airport. Um, and so, you know, those are the things that I think about when Mr. Mark says no commercial development. But I I love your point. We do have uh open space and and space that needs to be rehabbed and no one's coming to that either. So, thank you.
So I think we just need to be specific then when we talk about commercial space. The type of commercial space that we are looking for and the fact that right now in our community, we have retail and also office commercial space, brand new, that's not being used, as well as a whole bunch of um such property that quite frankly needs to be redeveloped, rehabbed, um, better utilized, um, more pro- promote, more appropriately utilized um for the land use. Um, we're gonna go, um, I don't know if Mr. Mark or anybody else from from Chamber wants to jump in on that conversation. Then we'll go to Ms. Antall and then Ms. Solis.
I could talk into, I I've, this is um Mr. Mark giving, uh, thank you, Mayor Evans. I I could make a blank comment about some of those commercial spaces, because I've I've worked with the developers of three of those four um student housing projects in regards to their space. Um, to be brutally honest, those spaces were intentionally dead spaces that were throwaway for the developers so they can get their projects done. We all know why they did that. It is that, so their their impetus to get that developed is on their terms not as out of a need to fill a space. Those those dead spaces, I would say probably eighty percent of them are gonna remain dead. And we should have captured the opportunity uh to develop more student housing if if, you know. I hate to say, I hate student housing. I built the Village at Aspen Place. I think it's a beautiful project, but all those retail spaces underneath there are extremely expensive. The student housing projects like Fremont Station and the Hub um and the Standard, they intentionally made those spaces about, they're not parking friendly, they're not, you know, they're not walkable, they're not, they're not good spaces. So they're gonna remain that way. And then to your point, the dilapidated old product that we have, well, I mean, I even looked at it from my own office. It's really difficult product to revamp. We did a project up on North San Francisco a couple of years ago that had been around since eighty-two, and we had to gut the entire place to make it reusable, because the floor plans are just outdated. You know, new products follows new trends, follows new needs for new owners. And that's why it gets developed. And and my comment about commercial development is the current pipeline, this current stuff that's being drawn, I'm not saying there's not a demand, because people wanna come to Flagstaff and they will continue to come to Flagstaff. It's the cost of them getting here that's the the block right now and and people are scared. So that's that's what I'm seeing.
We're gonna go to Ms. Antall, followed by Ms. Solis.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you so much for your time. Um, just to talk about development fees and what they can be used for. So development fees can really only pay for costs related to development impacts. So they really cannot pay for replacement vehicles or the maintenance and operation of existing vehicles or existing facilities. So the Infrastructure Improvement Plan is really calling out what the needs are for both police and fire for future use. So vehicles, communication equipment, um, and the like. So it's not really about replacement. Um, and if you'd like, I I do, I've been a little behind on my development status report, but I did send one out this last month. Um, and we can talk about commercial development that's in the pipeline. Um, you know, definitely we're seeing some shifts and changes. We may not be seeing as many retail facilities as we have and 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 certainly I think COVID um plays a role in some of that. But I would say that our team has been busier um than it has been in the past. We are processing more rezoning cases in this last year um than we have seen in the private, previous two years before that. Um, so I would say that the pipeline is still kind of, is still good as well in regards to that. Of course, mostly what we're seeing for rezonings um are residential. Um, and so when we talk about commercial, we typically also try to think of uh multifamily as commercial development as well. So so there's um those developments. But I mean, some of the big projects to mention that are in the pipeline and in the works that include um a new bank building, that's near Aspen Place. Um, SCA Tissue is looking to redevelop to a mixed retail um industrial park. Um, that's fairly significant as well. Uh, we've got In-N-Out Burger in the mix. Um, we're definitely seeing some fuel centers um in the process as well as a whole lot of new commercial development out at the mall. Um, so we're seeing new new, we've just had property annexed. Um, Circle K is underway, their redevelopment. And yes, some of these do take time. Um, but we're starting to see that influx, starting to work their way through that development process. Um, so I guess our point is, is that we're not seeing a complete drop off of commercial development. We're still seeing a fairly good influx of development projects as well as in the industrial section as well. Um, so we're seeing Joy Cone did a addition remodel, Shamrock Food Service Warehouse. Um, the Department of Child Services wants to build a brand new um office building as well as Migrant Glass, which is a seventy-two thousand um square foot new warehouse. So we are definitely seeing um an uptick in both commercial and industrial. And thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Antall. We will go back to Ms. Solis. And then what we'll do after Ms. Solis, um, if there's no more questions or comments, we will take a a five minute break and then we will come back to finish out our agenda. Ms. Solis?
Uh, I thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, I also wanna make space and recognize uh many, many uh small businesses who have engaged in remodeling. Uh, you know, and some kind of uh um refurbishing their 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 businesses to to um as a way of of getting ready to to rebound after the pandemic. Um, also with respect to uh uh what the city has done so far, uh, and I believe, you know, uh, we have our uh business attraction and business um business retention managers online to talk about the the different city programs that the council approved uh in June. Uh, this has something to do with the Development Reinvestment Incentive, which gives about um a percentage when it comes to to uh um construction costs. Uh, and some job creation incentive as well as as the Adaptive Reuse Program. Um, if a a a small business wants to uh to locate a a a business in an existing space that's uh within five thousand or less a um square uh feet area. So, um, you know, it's it's not all that bleak. So what I'm saying, thank you.
Okay, so if there's nothing else on this topic, we're gonna go ahead and take a a five minute break. We'll be back at approximately um five. Let's go five minutes till six. We'll be back at five minutes to six. That just evens it out. Um, I will not be um back after our break. Um, the Vice Mayor will pick up in my stead. I just want to let the Chamber know how greatly I appreciate our conversation that we're having here tonight. And I look forward to our continued partnership. Um, Julie, your leadership um as um the President of the Chamber has been very much appreciated.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
Welcome back, everybody. I believe that brings us down to item six on our agenda, which is an update from the city on insight into what's happening in the business community.
Vice Mayor, I think Shannon Anderson's gonna share a PowerPoint.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Mayor or Vice Mayor, uh Councilmembers and our Chamber President and Board. I'm Heidi Hansen, the Economic Vitality Director for the City of Flagstaff. Um, along with me are a few other of our city staff that will talk about some of the efforts that we've been doing that maybe you haven't heard of um or haven't heard in great detail that we would like to share with you this evening. Um, because of the the time already this evening, um, I will be speaking on some of the slides, but I will let you know that our Airport Director Barney Helmick and our Library Director Jared Tolman are with us this evening. If you have questions on their slides, but I will be going through some of them uh at more rapid speed, um, just so that we could continue with the evening. So next slide. I just wanted to give you some information about the airport. Um, the our routes are still fully intact. Thankfully, we do have routes to Denver, Dallas and Phoenix that are nonstop. And um due to COVID nineteen, which is so unfortunate, our inflaments are still down about sixty-five percent. But luckily, uh, as you probably have heard in the news, there have been very um, there's been several cities that have actually lost service or have had service discontinued right now. And luckily, Flagstaff has not been one of them listed. Um, we have extended our rent abatement for our, all of our tenants at the airport for another three months to give them help during this really trying time. This includes our airlines and our hangar tenants as well as our car rentals. And then we did receive the eighteen point one million dollar CARES Act grant. And I wanted to let you know that we have come before council with our four-year plan and how that will be spent. If you have questions on that, we have, again, Barney Helmick here and um, we can actually even talk to the Chamber Board at some time and share what those ideas are. And basically, it's all the things that we wanted to be able to do at the airport, which is including improvements um on hangars and things like that that we have not been able to do because of lack of funding. So those things will be done. So you'll be seeing a lot of different changes at the airport. Next slide. Um, the airport parking lot, yes, we are doing a second parking lot at the airport and it will be uh next to our FBI building. We are actually going to be doing, we're doing the work right now. We're actually doing a cultural study that is um required by our FAA. And we hope to um start breaking ground in spring on that parking lot so that when things do get back to normal, we will actually have plenty of parking um for our patrons. And this was talked about a little bit earlier about um the development, I believe, by Councilmember Whelan um of the three thirty-one point four I believe, by Councilmember Whelan, um of the three thirty-one-point-four-five acres that is adjacent to the airport. We actually did a request for qualifications for a master developer, and this actually closed on September twenty-first, and now we are in the procurement process of looking those over. Um, we had the airport um parcel master plan a while back to decide to look at what are some of the things that could be developed on that parcel. And there's a variety of items. And so this is actually what was included in that RSOQ um for the master developer to actually recognize and discuss um with whatever they sent us back. And so more to come on that. And then currently, we're working on an airport drainage study. Um, again, RSOQ was released, and that will be coming back um sometime in the middle of this month. Next slide. I'm going to turn it over to Dave McIntyre, our Community Investment Director. You heard a little bit from him earlier tonight about for a few of these slides. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, Council and Chamber of Commerce. Again, this is Dave McIntyre, as mentioned by Heidi, Community Investment Director for the city. I will also be doing a slightly expedited version, knowing that everybody's time is valuable. Um, my focus is briefly touching on a few selected actions from the community investment programs. We'll start off with arts and science. Uh, the arts, science, and cultural nonprofit community is a powerful economic force here in Flagstaff. Uh, BBB Arts and Science Funding allocated through the Flagstaff Arts Council provided almost forty different nonprofit groups with assistance and program funding. And this year, with council support, staff actually reallocated a hundred thousand dollars in capital funds, capital project funding, to provide additional support to the arts and science nonprofit community as they were heavily impacted by the pandemic. Uh, this was a big support to organizations and to the people who work for them. Next slide, please. Another example, and an example of our beautification program can actually still be seen downtown. To help beautify the community, flowers and a pollinator garden were placed in various parts of the downtown. BBB beautification funds were used for this project, and uh feedback has been that they were, in fact, quite beautiful. Studies have also shown that flowers attract visitors and locals and support businesses. Uh, we know that there's been some some great activity downtown, and this was a very popular project and one that we hope to expand on in the future. Uh, next slide, please. And to talk a little bit further about the downtown and efforts there, I'll pass the presentation over to Rebecca Sayers.
Good evening, everyone. Rebecca Sayers, Parks and Recreation Director for the City of Flagstaff. I have the pleasure of facilitating a team of both city staff and a Downtown Business Alliance partners that is working on expanded use of our rights-of-way uh in the downtown area, but it can also be applied in other parts of town. So the purpose of bringing this team together was to figure out the best and most efficient way to allow businesses to use city rights-of-way, allowing, to allow them to physical distance and uh be able to still operate their businesses. So you'll see downtown that we had a lane closure with Aspen Avenue. We have closed different parking spaces, and the Aspen Alley has been closed. And this is all allowing for additional seating or expanded seating into our right-of-way. So under this Euro is the acronym for Expanded Use of Rights-of-Way. Under this master permit that we created with the city manager's uh direction, we have four sub-permits that have been issued. These permits are issued at no cost to the businesses. And you'll see those businesses utilizing this space on Aspen Avenue. Then we have also worked with expanding sidewalk cafes. Throughout uh the downtown area, you'll see different sidewalk cafes that have been set up or expanded. And that's also at no fee to the businesses. And then in partnership with the DBA, we also added open seating to Heritage Square and the Aspen Alley. And on the next slide, we've got some pictures showing uh we also worked with beautification. Uh, next slide, please. Thank you. So we also worked with beautification, as you can see here, to add some beauty elements. Uh, the flowers, uh, we expanded on the the hanging flower pot idea and inserted these wine barrels. That's also part of the public safety partition. But on the far left and the far right, uh, pictures are the Aspen Avenue Lane Closure. In the middle on the left is the Aspen Alley Closure and Seating that's available. And then, of course, Heritage Square with open seating. This has been well received by our visitors and businesses alike. And I'll turn it back over to David McIntyre now. Thank you.
Hello again. Uh, Economic Development Staff provided information and referral as well as developing new programs designed to support local businesses that council approved. I'll briefly touch on a few of these new programs, although we did speak a little bit about uh some of them, and council members have referenced them earlier in the conversation. Um, the Business Retention and Expansion Incentive can provide between five thousand and thirty thousand dollars for businesses to be used to either retain or expand jobs in Flagstaff. Uh, first round has closed and closed, and three applications were received in the first round. They are being evaluated now. Additionally, the Adaptive Reuse Program, uh, which was referenced earlier by Councilmember Solis, can provide up to five thousand dollars towards the cost of converting an empty space into a new or relocated business. Uh, the intention of this program is to help businesses make that sometimes difficult step into a new space as those become available. And while we do know there are some vacancies around, we're hoping that we can help some new and growing businesses to move into those spaces using this program. Uh, these are all on our True Flagstaff website, as was mentioned earlier. And also, uh, we'll be happy to comment, present uh to the chamber as well as provide additional information again. Uh, next slide, please. Business incentive programs. Again, you've heard a little bit about our Sustainable Automotive Rebate Program, which seeks to enhance, advance the council's climate goals while helping support auto businesses and prevent that sales leakage that we've been hearing about. Um, the Development Reinvestment Incentive is actually uh intended to help attract larger businesses, larger uh commercial and industrial businesses. And that provides a portion of the one-time construction sales tax from the construction of new facilities back into the project or into the business that's locating here. The idea is to help offset some of the costs of public improvements or workforce development. And this will help attract good jobs from our target sectors, and this incentive is only available to businesses from those target sectors, which a couple examples of are biosciences and advanced manufacturing or software development. Finally, the Job Creation Incentive, which can provide up to fifteen thousand dollars uh directly towards the expenses of locating a business in Flagstaff, as long as it creates a minimum of ten new full-time positions, and those positions are all as well within those target sectors mentioned earlier. I'm happy to answer any questions. By the way, um, all the program managers who who handle these in a more direct fashion are are on the call, but as Heidi mentioned, um, I'm handling the slides themselves just for efficiency of speaker's sake. And I'd like to finish the economic development portion by just mentioning that that chamber staff, Joe Gally and Kat Ross, have been meeting with myself and our Economic Development Team uh on an ongoing basis to work on ways we can continue to align our efforts and find ways to further that relationship. And and not just talking about incentives or chambers programs, um, although we've done that, of course, but truly working on things that we can do better together. And I really do appreciate that partnership. I really appreciate Joe and and Kat working with us, and I look forward to seeing it continue to grow. Uh, next slide, please. And finally, I'll speak to parking real quick. Park Flag also contributed even after the pay-to-park and permit portions of the program were suspended uh in response to the pandemic. Park Flag staff managed the very popular carryout zones to help businesses continue selling even as dining habits changed, and parking aids sanitized high-touch spaces, built umbrella stands, planted flowers, and made sanitizer wipes from scratch to help keep people safe while they were coming into the district. Uh, Park Flag will remain suspended until its scheduled return on March first, twenty-twenty-one in order to uh continue to support businesses as we head into our slower season. Next slide, please. With that, I'll pass it back to Heidi Hansen.
Um, just wanted to share a little bit about the library. The library was able to pivot um very well during this pandemic and make sure that our collections would go online digitally, and they're using the platform called Hoopla. They also are using an e-material service called Libby, and I wanted to let you know that it has been amazing. These numbers have actually increased from the ones that you're seeing on the screen of how many community members have been actually using these services and are checking out our materials on a day-to-day basis. Next slide. And I wanted to let you know that our, both our libraries and actually a lot of our county libraries are doing curbside um pickup for our patrons where they can order online or they can call online and check out what they need. And what will happen is if they take the materials, um, once they return them, they actually get sanitized and get shelved for seventy-two hours before another patron can actually use the same materials. And then if um, they've been very helpful in a lot of their libraries is when someone doesn't have Wi-Fi access, which is why a lot of people come to a library, they've been actually able to um access it from their their parking lot, which has been enormous help to our community. Next slide. I'm going to turn this over to Lori Pappas, our Marketing and Media Relations Manager, who's filling in for Trace Warner, CDB Director.
Thank you, Heidi. Uh, good evening, Vice Mayor and Council. As Heidi had mentioned, my name is Lori Pappas, and I am the Marketing and Media Relations Manager for Discover Flagstaff. Um, just trying to be succinct here. Uh, summarizing, uh versatility and nimbleness is something that Discover Flagstaff is is operating under daily. Uh, we pivot um according to to the pulse of CDC uh and local um government safety travel sentiment, guiding uh every stroke, uh everything that we do. So looking um at this creative right here, um, I'm hopeful that all of you are very, very familiar with it. Um, the play stay uh or the please stay play distance and mask responsibly. Badge is uh is is an icon that is adorning all of our, all of our efforts from paid, owned, and earned media. We have created window clings out of this graphic, and these window clings are being offered to businesses at no charge. And again, this is just an effort uh to really drive the message home uh what Flagstaff expects when people are visiting businesses. And then you can see from the the thumbnails uh below uh just adaptation from our businesses and how how they're using the resource. And again, these are free, and they are still available for pickup at our visitor center to businesses. Next slide, please. Next slide. There we go. Hey, thank you.
Lori, actually, you missed a slide. If she, if you go back, Shannon. Do you see it now, Lori? The billboard?
I do not, but oh, there we go. Um, thank you, Shannon. Thank you, Heidi, for slowing me down here. Um, this particular creative is is out out of home. So the creative can be seen not only in our metro Phoenix market, but also in our larger drive markets such as California. So the top creative is one of several messages that Discover Flagstaff has pushed out for an inspiration. Uh, so when it's safe and and when we're ready uh to open up, just letting them know that uh Flagstaff will be waiting for them. Again, just as a means as of it uh of inspiration, travel inspiration, keeping the brand alive, keeping Flagstaff fresh and top of mind. Uh, the top creative will be waiting for you um is a result of asking our partners to work with us, understanding that budgets have been reduced. So our good friends um in the Legends District, downtown Phoenix, this particular board is located at Seventh Street in Washington and was offered to us at no charge. And it has delivered um one-point-eight-million impressions, again, at no charge to our number-one drive market. So we're really trying to communicate to visit Flagstaff when it's safe. And the creative below um is also out-of-home messaging, and that particular creative uh is located in Palm Springs um westbound as people are heading uh into Phoenix. Um, and again, letting them know that when it's safe, um, that we'll look forward to their visit. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, this creative, I'm sure you all have seen um the image on the left, Carry Out and Settle In, supports our dining establishments. And this creative is digital. It is served to northbound traffic north of the Sedona exit. So encouraging people to stop in Flagstaff, grab a bite to eat, and then head on out um to their final destination. And then it is also served locally to the local market, uh not only digital, but also in print media such as the Arizona Daily Sun and Flagstaff Business News. The image to the right of it is also served uh in the, in earned media and uh digital and and print as well, again, in Arizona Daily Sun and Flagstaff Business News. And this is designed as a staycation. I think everybody's familiar with that term. And we know not only is it our drive market that it's going to help get us back on our feet, but it's the locals as well. And um we did actually just recently uh just do a minor edit to this ad, calling attention to the Walk This Talk and and the Route Sixty-Six product that we now have, uh self-guided walking tours, and then just kind of helping moms at home as a lot of, a lot of parents are doing a lot of the schooling at home and and they're looking for lesson plans, things to do for extra credit, and um thinking that the walking tour uh might fit that bill really well. And then also Flagstaff Local, always top of mind, again, knowing that the locals are going to help us recover first. Um, just letting them know that shopping local, um, supporting local is paramount in our recovery. Next slide, please. All right. Thanks, Shannon. And um not only is it responsible visitation by means of masking and distancing, but it's also so important that we communicate our fire restrictions. And what you're looking at here is just that effort. Uh, this is also in owned, paid, and earned media. And I do want to show or or mention the creative to the left is paid media. Full-page ads ran on Page Three in the Arizona Republic, again, our number-one drive market. And I would be remiss if I didn't say that the Arizona Republic has been an incredible partner with us and also offered us free value-add full-page ad. Next slide, please. Um, it's it's all about communicating and keeping the brand alive because we know that travel is going to be a big lift for our city and getting us back on our feet. So as a creative means to keep Flagstaff top of mind, we've created a series of postcards. These postcards live in hard print and are available at no charge at the visitor center, and they also live on discoverflagstaff.com. So if you do want to send a postcard to a loved one or a family member or friend, um, that you just had to cancel plans. They had to cancel plans. They couldn't get here. You could do a virtual toast uh and do a high-altitude cheers with one of the postcards and just welcome them to Flagstaff when travel's ready. Same thing with a a virtual hug. You know, if you see somebody standing in in the bank line and you know or you notice that they've, that they're wearing their mask, you know, send them a postcard and just tell them thank you for for being responsible in masking. Next slide, please. And lastly, um, community cleanups is is not a a stranger to Discover Flagstaff. Um, for a few years now, we've been partnering with our sustainability team in hosting cleanup events. And as a matter of fact, we are hosting a cleanup event starting next week, October fourteenth, and uh we're using the literati, the Literati app and working very closely with sustainability on that event. And in addition, uh showing our commitment to a a cleaner Flagstaff, we have also just produced uh some biodegradable litter bags, and these will be available at the visitor center. And they're also available to to our teams here and uh just encouraging people to grab a bag to help keep Flagstaff beautiful. And at this point, I would like to turn it back over to Heidi, and and thank you.
And just to wrap up, um, I wanted to share a little bit more about flagstafflocal.com that Lori touched on. Um, we had eight-hundred-and-forty-six of our locals sign up for the program this past year. And basically, they were following pillars such as shop, Flagstaff, boat, donate, volunteer, mentor, support education, and be eco-friendly. Happy to report that in our why and our what of the program, we shared that by buying a uh your coffee locally um would be, is helpful. By buying your vehicle locally and keeping um the the sales taxes here, you're helping our community thrive. And I wanted to let you know Phase One was very successful. We're moving into Phase Two, um, the We're moving into Phase Two this month, where we will start talking about the pillars again, and how important it is for our community to keep their money local. And so I hope that you will participate with us and that you will actually promote this for us. One of the things that we talk about a lot is not just living here, but how a visit can turn into a lifetime. And so we take it very serious in this division to make sure that anybody that does visit our mountain town enjoys themselves so much by all the things they can discover that maybe one day they'll want to grow their business here. So we have a whole Visit, Discover, Grow campaign that's been out for some time, talking about our sectors, and we just wanted the chamber to know that we're with you, that that's still the plan. We want people to visit, discover, and grow Flagstaff and to continue to make it thrive. And we're here to answer any questions if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Hansen, Pappas, and Mr. McIntyre. That was a wonderful presentation. Council or members of the chamber, does anyone have any questions for this team? And if not, I'd like to move us to our next agenda item, where we can discuss collaboration and future efforts, but does anyone have any questions first? Not seeing one. Ms. Pastrick, on this agenda item, there was also room for an update from, from members of your board. I feel like we've probably covered a lot of ground on that front, but is there anything else from your board in terms of updates and information sharing around COVID and whatnots?
Vice Mayor Shimoney, no. We did cover that, and we appreciate the time allotted and this meeting that has really opened our eyes a lot together. I think we've made a lot of, a lot of strides. So, excuse me, no, no further questions. Thank you for asking.
So not seeing any comments. Let's go ahead and move down to item number seven of our agenda, which is partnering together to assist business rebound faster. And this is a discussion about what is happening in the local business community, the various programs and assistance available to help businesses, business owners during the pandemic, and how the city of Flagstaff and Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce can partner together to assist business rebound at a faster pace. Mr. Love.
Mr. Shimoney, I do believe we've covered a lot of that as well, as we were going back and forth between council and chamber board. I think that a lot of our discussion next time could center around the many ways new development does pay for itself, and we've just had a broad swath of businesses, and then we'll focus more on smaller businesses with 15 or less employees next time, and their many queries and how we're collaborating together. But at this point, no, I think we've gone well past our hour and 45 minutes start time, so thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, and I agree, we've had a wonderful conversation, and I really appreciate this, this lot, this avenue of communication that we have in partnership with the chamber. So that brings us down. Anyone else have any comments, anyone on council, before we move on to the informational items? Not seeing, oh, Councilwoman Ross, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Just looking back at my notes from, from Mr. Love's comments earlier about the availability of skilled, certified, and licensed employees, especially in this figure sector, and I also heard from Mr., Mr. Mark about something to do with, with labor costs in construction. So let me also, let the chamber board present here tonight, that I'm also on the Coconino County Workforce Development Board, and so I'm wearing two hats, and also the council, the city council, has identified workforce development as a major goal. So if there's anything that I can help you with, connect you with offline, I'm here for you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, if I could just say a couple of words in response to Councilwoman Salas, thank you very much for bringing those up, Councilwoman Salas. I took note also, and the chamber has recently been a recipient of a workforce development grant, and it is for assisting business in new training of the skills you need in your business, retraining if an employee is going to move into a different position. So we'll work on that together. I'll keep you posted on that, and for Mark Love's business and many others. But I appreciate that you took note, and I did as well, to follow up.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Ms. Pastrick. Also, like, just recently, the Department of Labor has announced a lot of grants when it comes to workforce development. It has like 156, 156 million in grants for career training services to low-income, older individuals who seek to re-enter workforce, 150 million grand to H1B, a one workforce grant program when it comes to middle and high-skilled occupations, focusing on technologies, cybersecurity, advanced manufacturing, transportation, and then, oh, and then the grants to women in apprenticeship and non-traditional occupations. So I hope our region can, can benefit from those federal grant dollars. I believe, of course, there's some, some requirements accessing those grants, but it has, you know, I, being on the, on the Coconino County Workforce Development Board, I'll be one of your, your go-to person to, to, to access those grants on behalf of the region. And then, of course, since I have the microphone and the video, I just want to congratulate the chamber and thank the chamber for, for, for being the go-to institution of everything business, especially small local businesses in Flagstaff. You've been providing services to, to the local businesses for 129 years. So keep, keep doing the great work that you do. I'm hoping there will be more opportunities for, for us to partner, the chamber and the city, when it comes to, you know, to helping our businesses thrive and grow in Flagstaff. And again, congra, and thank you for also partnering with, with Arizona's Noble and providing that grant, 60,000 grants to, to aid small businesses focused on outdoor recreation and tourism. So from my grateful heart to yours, thank you all.
Thank you so much, Ms. Salas.
Thank you, Ms. Salas.
Sorry, Ms. Pastrick, did you want to add anything?
I just want to say thank you very much. That was very kind.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Whelan.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I certainly appreciate these meetings that we have together, and I would hope that the new council coming in would make a commitment in continuing these meetings. You know, it's so important that we communicate and that we team up and work together. One of those things I've, I heard throughout this evening was the concern about the minimum wage and that minimum wage going up, and we were quickly reminded that this was a citizens initiative, but I truly believe that it's with chamber and our council that, that if we can join hands and help our businesses figure out ways and support them together, that's why we're here. We're, we're both in the same business, and that's to support our community, and the chamber has those skills, and so do we. So we'll only be stronger for our businesses if we take each other's hand. So thank you again, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan.
Thank you, Ms. Whelan. Okay, we have a comment from Mr. Love.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor Shimoney. Actually, you know what? Councilwoman Whelan, you took the words right out of my mouth. I can't reiterate, reiterate enough of what you said in, in working together. It is great, it is refreshing. I learned a tremendous amount today, and I just personally wanted to say thank you to, to the mayor, the vice mayor, to all of the council members, and to all the staff in the wings that are making the magic happen. Thank you very much. This was awesome, it was productive, and I certainly would like to go on record for saying that I would like to do this more often. I know that there was a big lag in us getting to this point with a lot of complexities in between, but going forward, I think, you know, I think we each hopefully learned, learned a lot in just getting up to date on what each of us are doing and how we can work together with what's going to be going forward. So I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those comments, and I too appreciate the space to communicate and think it's extremely important for all of us in our community. Councilmember Odegaard.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, and again, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for participating in our meeting this evening. We've learned a lot, especially what's happening at the city side of things and us being proactive to help our business community. And I really want to give a shout out to our city manager, Mr. Clifton, in being so proactive in helping our business community, especially the downtown area. It was a priority of Mr. Clifton to help our business community in the downtown area, and he did, delivered. And so kudos to Mr. Clifton, be so proactive and just, you know, the bureaucracy of governance and things like that, he kind of pushed it out of the way and moved very quickly in helping our downtown businesses. And so really appreciate all the efforts and all the communication, and definitely, I personally, as we've, everyone's said so far, like to see this continue for the future. So thank you, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Odegaard. Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have a lot to add. I just want to say that I'm really proud to live in a city where communication is so important, and, and the first step in solving any problems is communication, and we did a good job tonight. The other thing is, I really look forward to the tours that we used to do of Joy Cone or whoever. So when COVID's over, let's do some more tours. So anyway, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Councilwoman McCarthy. Not seeing any other comments, I just want to say that I think we are still actually technically in item number six of our agenda, so let's, or sorry, seven. So let's move to item number eight, which is informational items to and from council and, and chamber board. And I think we kind of started doing that already on our part, council. But yeah, I'll just add that, you know, right now, we're seeing an uptick in cases, and as we heard from, from you, Ms. Pastrick, at the beginning, the, the perception of safety and, and the, the need for that, for our businesses to thrive, and that the business community are ready for more business, but because of the health concerns of our, of our community and our public, we're just not, we're not there yet, right? And folks are struggling to get back to those old ways of, of going out and doing their business. So if we can just get, you know, everyone's all hands on deck, working together to minimize the spread of COVID-19 in our community, I know we're working hard, I know we're all burnt out, I know we're frustrated, and we're, we're, we're not enjoying, you know, monitoring our clients and our, our, our teams of employees to do what's right, but we really need to, to up our game and get ahead of this. And I think we've done a great job, but we're definitely not out of the woods on this. And so I think what happens to our business community happens to all of us, and what happens to all of us happens to our business community. We're one and the same, and, and we need to work together and get through this virus. Does anyone else have any comments, closing comments in, in to and from of our agenda? I know it's been a late, late meeting, so we'll wrap it up shortly here. Just want to give everyone one more chance. I think we're good. Now, if I can just open up my agenda on my end, there it is. Okay, so that brings us down to public participation. City Clerk, are there any other public comments?
Not, not this evening, Vice Mayor, thank you.
Great. Well, with that, that brings us to the end of our meeting. Again, thank you all so much for joining us in this conversation, and we look forward to the next one. Have a great night, and we are adjourned.
Thank you.
See you all tomorrow.
Have a fantastic night.
Thank you, everybody.